Worship, we do have quorum.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everyone to the third meeting of City Council, this virtual meeting held during the COVID-19 emergency. I'd invite viewers to check the city's website for current details of COVID-19 service impacts. And the meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city's website. The City of London is committed to making an effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council, standing or advisory committee meetings, and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489. I will look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest, please. I will note, colleagues, that Councillor Turner, although he will be coming in soon, I presume, has indicated a conflict relating to items 4.1 and 4.2 of the second SPPC report, both having to do with appointments to the London Public Library Board by indicating that his spouse is an employee of the London Public Library. Any other conflicts to declare? Councillor Turner, I've covered off your pecuniary interest on items 4.1 and 2 of the SPPC. You can repeat them, but I thought I did a fairly eloquent job, so I think you're covered. So, colleagues, we have two recognitions that I would like to deal with. The first, I'd like to call on Councillor Hamu, if you would, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. On January 15th, a radicalized terrorist took a rabbi hostage in Texas for over 11 hours. My heart was in my stomach, the entire ordeal hoping that the rabbi and the congregants made it out safely. I was also very concerned about how this affected my Jewish neighbors, especially those I see walking to synagogue every Friday evening for Sabbath. I contacted the Your Shalom Synagogue Monday morning located two blocks from my house and had a discussion with Rabbi Catherine Clark about any safety concerns the Jewish community may have and assured her that we will protect our community in London because we believe here that if one of us is attacked, all of us are attacked. Rabbi Clark also told me that our London Police Services had reached out amongst others, and I was very proud of how the city elevates each other throughout these moments of adversity. However, I say this not just to remind us of how we all came together as a community, but that there is still much work to be done and that we cannot let our guard down. Holocaust denial and other forms of antisemitic hatred have flourished in the digital age. It is on the rise, and it is therefore critical that at this time we identify the importance of the lessons learned from the Holocaust. The United Nations has designated January 27th Holocaust Remembrance Day. And after the horrific antisemitic hostage incident that happened on January 15th in Texas, it is especially crucial that we remember how hate is not acceptable in any form. I invite my council colleagues to join me in posting a message on social media to show support towards our Jewish brothers and sisters by using the hashtags #WeRemember or hashtag NeverAgain between now and January 27th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hamu. And the second recognition is from me, and if I might, colleagues. You know, between this meeting of council and our last session on December 21st, London lost two pillars of our community, particularly in the Western Mustang football world, and, as I say, two genuine community leaders. Given all they accomplished, both on and off the field, I felt it appropriate to acknowledge and pay tribute to the memories of Coach Larry Haylor and Coach Darwin Samoria. We lost Coach Haylor on January 6th, just a few days after the death of Coach Samoria. You know, between the two of them, they won a combined four Vanyay Cup championships and 14 Yates Cup championships. Even more impressive than their achievements on the football field was their commitment to Western University and the city at large. Touching so many lives, Darwin was a coach, teacher, mentor, and my friend, who deeply cared for his athletes, students, colleagues, and team. He was a tried and true friend to so many who loved him dearly. His gift of connecting with people was one of his many superpowers. One couldn't help but feel special and valued in his presence. Larry Haylor was purple and proud and was part of the Western University community over 46 years. Took over as head coach of the Mustangs in 1984 until his retirement from coaching in 2006. And during his tenure as head coach, he led the Mustangs to two Vanyay Cups, 88's Cups, and was named Ontario Coach of the Year seven times and Canadian University Coach of the Year two times. The highlight of his professional coaching career was being named to the Canadian Football Hall of Fame in 2014. Larry understood the importance of surrounding oneself with outstanding people, both coaches and players, and that is success we shared with each of them. Our thoughts are with their loved ones and families. Darwin and Larry, we will miss you, and we thank you for your service. May their memories be a blessing. Thank you, colleagues. I should advise that Councillor Cassidy has indicated she will be delayed joining us around 5:00 PM. And I would indicate to you that I am not aware of any confidential matters to be considered in public. So what I will be looking for, colleagues, and for the benefit of the public, typically at this time we deal with, we go into closed session. But as has been our custom during the pandemic, I'm looking for a motion for a change in order to move item 4 in closed session and the third report of council in closed session to after stage 13 and bylaws. I'm looking for a mover for that, please. I see Councillor Fife Miller, seconded by Councillor Van Mirbergen. Let's call the vote on that, please. Councillor Lehman?
I'll vote yea.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on December 21st, 2021. Councillor Hillier, seconded by Councillor Hamu. Is there any discussion? I see none, so we will call the question.
Councillor Van Holst, Councillor Lehman?
Oh, yea.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Colleagues, we have a number of communications and petitions. And what I will be doing is looking for them to be moved to their appropriate committee reports. Although there are two items that I will ask the clerk to advise the public what it is that we are dealing with, because we'll be looking to deal with two items associated with expropriation, which requires a separate process, which we have done a few times over this past year. So what I will do, if I might, is deal with 6.1 and 6.2, and then the items associated with in 6.3, we'll move those to the appropriate committees. So could I ask the clerk, please, just to clarify for the benefit of our listeners, what it is that we are going to be doing over the next two approvals or two voting processes?
Your worship, it's a two-step process. First, the council sits as approving authority, and this is in relation to Southdale Road West and Wickersham Road Improvements Project. The first motion would be that council convene as the approving authority, pursuant to the provisions of the Expropriations Act, for the purpose of considering communication number one from the deputy city manager, environmental and infrastructure with respect to the expropriation of the lands as may be required for the project known as the Southdale Road West and Wickersham Road Improvements Project.
So why don't we start with that, if we could, please? And I'll be looking for a mover and a secondary to establish the approving authority for communication number one. Do I have a mover, please? I have Councillor Hillier, I have Councillor Hopkins, thank you very much. Any comments or questions? So with that, we will call the question.
Councillor Van Holst? Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Being as the approving authority, the second step is this. And I will read the motion for the benefit of our public here that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, environmental and infrastructure, with the concurrence of the director, transportation and mobility, on the advice of the director of realty services, the following actions be taken with respect to the expropriation of land as may be required for the project known as the Southdale Road West and Wickersham Road Improvement Project. B, the council, pardon me, A, the council of the Corporation of the City of London as approving authority pursuant to the Expropriations Act, as amended hereby approves the proposed expropriation of land as described in Schedule A, as appended to the staff report dated January 25, 2022, and the City of London, County of Middlesex, be noted that the reasons for making this decision are as follows. One, the subject lands are required by the Corporation of the City of London for the Southdale Road West and Wickersham Road Improvement Projects. Two, the design of the project will address the current and future transportation demands along the corridor. Three, the design is in accordance with the Municipal Class Environment Assessment Study Recommendations for the Southdale Road West and Wickersham Road Improvements Project, approved by the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee at the meeting held on February 20th, 2019. And then B, subject to the approval of A above, certificate of approval be issued by the city clerk on behalf of the approving authority on the prescribed form. It be noted that no request for hearings of necessity were received. So for that, I will look for a mover and a secondary. Do I have, please? Councillor Van Mirbergen, seconded by Councillor Hamu. Any discussion? I see none, we will call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you very much. And the third step in this, colleagues, even though we will be dealing with the second item, is that this will require that the approving authority meeting be adjourned and that the municipal council reconvene in regular session. With that, I'll look for a mover, please. Councillor Hopkins, seconded by Councillor Lehman, thank you very much. Any question with respect to that? I see none, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
And colleagues, there is but one step for this particular part here, affectionately called step one. And it is that on the, again, for the benefit of the public, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, environment, environmental and infrastructure with the concurrence of the director, transportation and mobility, and on the advice of the director of realty services, the following actions be taken with respect to the expropriation of land as may be required for the project known as Southdale Road West and Wickersham Road Improvements Project. A, the proposed bylaw as appended to the staff report dated January 25, 2022, as appendix A being a bylaw to expropriate lands in the City of London in the County of Middlesex, Southdale Road West and Wickersham Road Improvements Project, be introduced at the municipal council meeting to be held on January 25, 2022. B, the civic administration be directed to take all necessary steps to prepare a plan or plans showing the expropriated lands and register such plan or plans in the appropriate registry or land titles office pursuant to the Expropriations Act within three months of the approving authority granting approval of the set expropriation. C, the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign on behalf of the expropriating authority the plan or plans assigned by an Ontario land surveying showing the expropriated lands. And D, the city clerk be authorized and directed to execute and serve the notices of expropriation required by the Expropriations Act and such notices of possession that may be required to obtain possession of the expropriated lands. So with that, I will look for a mover and a secondary, and then following that, have discussion. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Fife Miller, seconded by Councillor Hopkins, thank you. Any discussion? Councillor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I want to thank, hopefully, council support on moving this forward. As we develop, our infrastructure has to keep pace with the development. And it's vitally important to do the improvements as we move around in these new areas that are being developed. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Very much. Colleagues, I'm going to turn your attention to 6.3 and 6.4, which we can deal with in one motion. 6.3 deals with amendments to members of council proof of COVID-19 vaccination policy. We have two communications from Councillor Van Holst and one councillor from G Harper. And 6.4, investing in candidate infrastructure program, public transit stream intake 3, where we'd be referring that to Civic Works. Oh, and pardon me, the prior would be referred to Corporate Services Committee, 6.3. 6.4 referred to Civic Works. We have two communications from W Brock. We have one from Councillor Van Holst. We have one from C Butler, one from M Mixa. And so with that, I would like to have a motion to move those to the appropriate committees, please. Moved by Councillor Van Mirbergen, seconded by Councillor Pelosi, thank you very much. Any comments or questions? I see none, we'll call the vote.
Councillor Morgan? Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Aware of any motions to which notice has been given, which just moves us right into the committee reports. And with that, 8.1, the second report of planning environment committee. I'll call on Councillor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, your worship. I will be putting the second report of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. I have not heard from anyone that would like anything pulled or that they will be recusing themselves. I will be pulling number 14, which is 4.1, the first report from EPAC.
Thank you. Does anyone wish any of these other items dealt with separately? Seeing none, it has been put on the table. Any comments or questions, and all with the exception of 4.1? Councillor Turner, please.
Now, thank you, your worship, through you. I just wanted to draw attention to number 13, or 3.5, is 257, 263 Springbank. There's a fair amount of interest from the community. This is right across the street from the larger development that the OMB approved previously. And so that's led to some apprehensions about the impact of this building on the neighborhood. It's a four-story development, and it seems reasonably sized. The concerns from the neighbors speak to the footprint of the building on its lot coverage, about how traffic will be managed and mitigated coming off of Forest Hill onto Springbank, and some concerns about light, privacy, and things that mostly can be addressed through site plan. The committee graciously agreed to place an H5 holding provision on the site to allow for more community input onto the site plan matters. I think those are all reasonable in terms of some of the concerns that were articulated by the neighborhood in terms of its size and intensity. This is on a fairly high-order road on Springbank. It's mid-rise at four stories, and the committee agreed that that was an appropriate size and intensity for the site. But that all said, I did want to point out the concerns of the constituents and residents in the neighborhood for the attention of the council. But also, I have to say that I think this is probably an appropriate building for the site, too. And I think developer and the applicant took a lot of time to consider the public concerns through public meeting and tried to address those things and weave them into the proposal that's set before us today.
Thank you very much. Right next to have Councillor Van Holst.
And thank you, your worship, and I wanted to extend my gratitude to the committee for supporting the development on King Edward. Think it's going to make a big difference to that area. So we're looking forward to the transformation.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hopkins?
And if I may, your worship, to sum up, we had a number of consent items and special provisions, or holding provisions and special provisions throughout consent items, as well as the strategic plan variance report. We had five public participation meetings, and the two councillors spoke well to the two PPMs in their wards. And we also received and approved the EPAC and the TFAQ reports as well. So with that, we will put it on the floor.
Thanks very much, and I should have given you the opportunity to make those opening comments with regard to that, but thank you for sharing those, Councillor Hopkins. I see no other comments, so with, all with the exception of item 14, which is 4.1 of the second report of PEC. We will call the question.
Councillor Lehman?
I'll vote yea.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hop-
So I would like to put number 14, 4.1, which is the first report of the Environmental and Ecological Planning Advisory Committee on the floor. And I would like to just add that correspondence, council should have received correspondence from the secretary as to the amendment that I would like to propose regarding 4.1.
And that is that civic administration be requested to consider the inclusion of images of bird-friendly residential windows along with an explanation of why the markers are important. Do you have a secondary for that amendment? Councillor Pelosi, any comments or questions? Councillor Lehman?
Thank you. I'm not too sure why this is coming as an amendment to council. It says a matter of, to go, it's on the deferred list for planning, so why wouldn't this go back to the standing committee?
Let's ask Councillor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, through you, your worship, to Councillor Lehman for asking. So this is really just to add clarification and to be fully compliant to the motion the council approved back in November when it came to the pamphlet. And the motion stipulated that civic administration be requested to consider the brochure and information that goes into that. So it's just really more adding further clarification that this is done through civic administration to be compliant to the motion that was supported back in November.
Councillor Lehman? And you're unmute, councillor.
I'm just reading the original motion, the request to update the site control bylaw and guidelines for bird-friendly building design. No plans be added to the deferred list, and I'm not too sure. I'm not too sure how this adds clarity to that. I would prefer this to be dealt with at planning.
Councillor Hopkins, you wish to respond?
The motion that was passed by council back in November also included that the bird-friendly pamphlet noted be circulated to EPAC and the AWAC Committee for Review to make comments. And that was part of that motion, and to be fully compliant with that, any amendment should go through civic administration. And that, we're more or less just being compliant with what was already passed, and that it's sort of contrary if we don't do it.
Councillor Lehman? And you're unmute?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't follow that logic, so I won't be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship, and I think I can perhaps provide a little clarity to Councillor Lehman here based on what I heard from Councillor Hopkins and in reviewing the message that was circulated to all of us. So in the original part B, there's a request to contact, civic administration be requested to contact the London Bird Team to finalize. And in Councillor Hopkins' amendment, the direction is to just amend that clause to read that the civic administration be requested to consider the inclusion of the images in the bird-friendly residential windows along with the explanation. So it's, I think it's a housekeeping matter more than anything. I don't see it as something that needs to go back through PEC at this time because it's going to go through civic administration. And then ultimately, the rest of the clauses in this motion will send it along back to the advisory committee, and ultimately, it'll come back to PEC in the future as well. So it's a housekeeping order of operations amendment, as I read it. So if Councillor Hopkins can provide any clarity, that's, if I've misunderstood, that would be great. But through you, I think that's where the goal of the amendment is landing.
Councillor Hopkins, for the benefit of those who have nodded in the affirmative, Councillor Hopkins?
Yes. If I just may add to Councillor Lewis's comments as well, it's important to know that civic administration ultimately, in the end, is responsible for the content of the pamphlet. And we're just being compl- And we're just being compliant with that. And the information to add this to the pamphlet ultimately is a civic administration responsibility.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? This has been moved and seconded. This is the amendment, so with that, we will call the question.
Counselor Lehman?
I'll vote yeah.
Close and vote. Motion carries thirteen to one.
That is my report.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Oh, excuse me, we're almost there. We have to now. That's right, I had this already written down and noted. We now have, we look for a motion to or a mover to accept the motion as amended. So with that, I will look for a mover, Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. Thank you very much. Any questions on this? This is the motion as amended. Thank you, clerk. I see none. We'll call the question.
Counselor Helmer? Close and vote. Motion carries fourteen to zero.
Hopkins, I think we can say this emphatically. Thank you.
That is my report.
Thank you. Now for the second report of the Community Protective Services Committee, I'd like to I don't believe Counselor Cassidy is here now. I'll call on Vice Chair Helmer to present the report, if I could, please.
Thank you. I'm happy to put the full report on the floor. Relatively brief meeting, as you will see from the report from the committee. I don't think there's any items that need to be pulled for conflicts.
Does anyone want or wish to deal with any of these items separately? It's been appropriately put on the floor. Any discussion? I see none. We'll call the question.
Close and vote. Motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you. That's it for you, Counselor Helmer? Great job. With that, I will now turn us to the second report of the Corporate Services Committee and call on Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, your worship. I have not been made aware of any items that colleagues wish pulled at this time. So we'll see if there's any there. If not, I will put the whole report on the floor.
So we will look to see if there are any items that colleagues wish to have dealt with separately in the Corporate Services Committee report. Counselor Van Hols, is that your hand up?
Yes, number twelve, if you would.
Number twelve, four point three amendment to member of council proof of COVID nineteen vax policy. Thank you. Any other items, colleagues? So we're dealing with all but item twelve, four point three. Any discussion? Counselor Morgan, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, just a comment with respect to the election sign by law update, only because I made the comment at the meeting. There was an "it being noted" clause with respect to impacts of the proposed changes. And in my comments, I had suggested that there was the possibility of our staff to do some research into the, basically some review of the academic research in this space. I think after reflection, it's probably more appropriate for our staff to be doing the technical components of the impacts. I certainly have endeavored myself to go and talk to colleagues at Western and others who can put me in the direction of the academic research related to the impacts of signs from a democratic perspective. So I'm not sure if it would be the best idea to have our staff start to interpret and compare journals of academic journals against each other. So I just wanted to walk back a little bit of my comments from the meeting and say, I think it's obviously appropriate for them to measure the impacts on how signs would look, the number of roads included, but I'll endeavor to do my own research on the other side of things.
So noted, thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? I see none. So with the exception of four twelve, which is four point three, we will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Item twelve, four point three, the amendment to members of council proof of proof of COVID nineteen vaccination policy as it relates to bill number seventy-two. That was a, in response to communication that was received from Counselor Van Hols, the committee recommendation was to receive and take no action, and I'll put that on the floor now.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Counselor Van Hols?
Thank you, your worship, and I think this also relates to the policy that we plan to implement. I'm going to talk for less than five minutes, if I'm interrupted. Make a motion to hear the medical advice that's behind the policy and probably ask that you vote against what's on the floor. What we're passing today seems to be a policy that creates two classes of people, considers the non-preferred class as higher risk, and imposes a more rigorous testing regime upon them. My big concern is that we may be doubling down on strategies that haven't worked, and that we may be establishing a municipal precedent for unwanted discrimination or unwarranted discrimination. Remember, there's people calling for the unvaccinated to be fined and fired and denied medical service, segregated, and incarcerated. And why? It's not because the vaccines are preventing transmission, but it may be because preconditions for discrimination already exist in the form of dehumanizing labels. Most people being labeled with the pejorative term anti-vaxxer were never against vaccines in general. They're against a government overreach that would deprive or coerce from them the right to inform consent, which ironically is what these kinds of policies do. So, but if we are going to have policies like this, we should at least make sure they will produce some substantive benefit. But when I look at these tests, look at what they can and can't do, I have some big doubts, which is why I wanted to do my due diligence and hear the medical advice behind the policy. I haven't enjoyed the last two years. And when people realize how much debt has been piled on their grandchildren, how much inflation they'll have to deal with, and how little long-term protection the vaccines have given us, I think we may wish we had taken an altogether different approach and different than what we're doing today. So I'm going to vote against what's on the floor, mostly because I don't believe I even have the authority to pass a policy like this. I feel the decision is big implications, but as it applies to me on council, a pretty small outcome since I've already committed to work from home. In the Song of Hiawatha poem, the Great Spirit says, "All your strength is in your union, all your danger is in discord." I feel this policy takes away from unity, and I hope people will consider voting against it. But at this point, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to go into camera and inquire about the confidential medical advice that was received by staff from the health unit.
You put a motion on the floor. Do you have a second for that? Counselor, there is no second for that. With that, thank you very kindly. Any other comments or questions with respect to this item, four point three? Counselor Turner, please.
Your worship, not to prolong the things. There are some points to listen to in Counselor Van Hols, and there's some things that I think we all grow tired to. We've, Counselor Van Hols brought this to the tables on a number of occasions. I think that this council has illustrated its position on those matters. The one thing that I would like to draw out from what Counselor Van Hols said is this discussion about otherism. And I think it's a valid point. We're going through a very it's been a tough year, a tough couple of years, as Counselor mentioned. And the divisiveness is there. However, we don't need to take antagonistic terms necessarily. But the measures that are being proposed here in terms of vaccination requirements for employees are reasonable. They're appropriate. They are not without precedent in a number of other sectors on vaccinations in general. My staff all have to be fully vaccinated and
I'm sorry, Counselor, you're breaking up. We've lost the last twenty seconds. After you said your staff were all vaccinated?
The so vaccination
Again, Counselor, I apologize. We're struggling to get the content of those last few words. You want to try one last time, and then we'll give up on you, kind of? No? Well, thank you. We'd never give up on you, for the record, I want you to know. But thank you for your effort in trying. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? I see none. So with that, we are now voting on four point three, item twelve on your agenda. We'll call the question.
Close and vote. Motion carries thirteen to one.
Colleagues, Counselor Lewis?
And that concludes the report from Corporate Services, your worship.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor. Now for the second report of the Civic Works Committee, I'd like to call on Counselor Pelosi, please.
Thank you, your worship. I have not been given notice to have anything pulled separate, and every item was a unanimous vote of committee.
Thank you very much. Excuse me for just a moment there. Does anyone wish to have anything dealt with separately? Counselor Van Hols, please.
Yes, can I have item ten pulled, your worship?
So to be clear, we're talking about ten, four point one, Investing in Candidate Infrastructure Program. Is that, just to be clear, Counselor Van Hols?
That's exactly it, and it's regarding my communication to that item.
So noted. Thank you very much. Does anyone wish any other item dealt with separately? I see none. Any discussion on all the items with the exception of the item which has been pulled?
Your worship, shall I put them on the floor for you and give an overview as the committee chair?
I think that would be very nice. Would you please?
Thank you, your worship. I will put all the items on the floor with the exception of ten being four point one for Counselor Van Hols. I will note that item nine being three point one is the E A for W twelve A landfill. In your added package, staff did do a presentation at committee of about twelve twelve minutes outlining the last four and a half years of the process to get us to this point of decision-making that we're almost to. And like I said, everything else was a unanimous decision of committee.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, I think we all appreciate that clarification. Any comments or questions? Counselor Turner, we're going to try you again. Go ahead.
How about now?
How about now?
Okay, good. My apologies earlier. I've been having technical difficulties for the past couple of days. So just with respect to item nine, the environmental assessment for the W twelve A expansion, in the presentation, thank you, Counselor Pelosi, for drawing attention to it. On the second slide, or sorry, a few slides in, it talks about number one A, the Terms of Reference Overview, and there's a key parameters element that says waste diversion. It says sixty percent residential waste diverted by the end of twenty twenty-two. It will be moving towards pilot implementation of green bins in part through this year, which might make it a little difficult to achieve sixty percent residential waste diversion by the end of twenty twenty-two. Just wondering, through you, your worship, if there were comments to that end.
Thank you very much. Would that be Mr. Stanford that would make those comments? Which member of staff would like to deal with that?
Your worship, that would be me.
Go ahead, Ms. Sher.
Through you, your worship, yes. Certainly our intent was to be much further along with the sixty percent waste diversion by the end of twenty twenty-two. As committee or as council is well aware, we've encountered a number of supply chain issues relative to acquiring the vehicles to provide that service. We will start rollout this year as intended, but it will take a little longer than we'd hoped. I think it's a fair comment to say that we'll be getting to that target into twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-two, and I apologize for not catching that on the slide.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, your worship, just to follow up. Do we have any obligations, either through the EA or the TOR to make notifications, or are we okay with moving in towards that goal in twenty twenty-three?
Ms. Sher?
Thank you, your worship. We are okay with moving towards that goal in twenty twenty-three. Our obligations with respect to our diversion targets are for twenty twenty-five, and we still intend to be well ahead of those dates.
Counselor Turner?
Very good. Thanks. That answers questions.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I see none. Therefore, we will call the question.
Counselor Helmer? Closing the vote. Motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you. I'll note that Counselor Cassidy has joined us. Welcome. And back over to you, Counselor Pelosi, please.
Thank you, your worship. Item ten being four point one is the Investing in Candidate Infrastructure Program Public Transit Stream Intake, number three. I will put this one on the floor, noting it starts at page seventy-three of your Civic Works Agenda that the intake has a long breadth of which we have to get projects in, but the completion date of all the projects has to be October twenty twenty-seven, which in actuality isn't that long out, the time you look into different processes we need to get construction projects ready. The projects outlined in it range from road infrastructure for cycling, pedestrian crossings, and enhancements to the Thames Valley Parkway bike parking and accessibility and bridge pinch points. And this was one of the ones that leveraged municipal funding with provincial and federal opportunities for your seventy-three cent dollars. I will put it on the floor.
Thank you. And with that, I'll look for any comments or questions. I see Counselor Van Hols, please.
Thank you, your worship. A lot of great ideas on that list. I did, however, think that fourteen million dollars seemed like an unbalanced amount to spend on new cycling lanes. So what I'd like to propose instead, realizing that there's approximately thirty-nine million in streetlights needed to properly illuminate the city, is to take half of that and put it into the warranted streetlight program. And I think that will it will produce a similar effect in making things safer, because certainly, streetlights are good for both cyclists and pedestrians, and of course, the drivers that'll be watching out for them. So that would be my preference. And so I'd like to put a motion on the floor that civic administration be directed to reallocate seven of the fourteen million dollars of P T S funding earmarked for cycling lanes into the warranted streetlight program.
Before I look for a second for that, I'd like to ask, if I can, on all our behalf, perhaps take this to Ms. Sher and just confirm whether that's not that it's not a valid motion, but does that become eligible within the circumstance of the eligibility program of the candidate infrastructure program? That may either make this a simple or an extended discussion. Ms. Sher?
Thank you, your worship. Please, as a street lighting likely would be eligible, particularly on Please, as a street lighting likely would be eligible, particularly on higher order roadways, where there are transit services or directly connected transit services. I would indicate though, that we would struggle with delivering a program this size within the parameters of the program due to supply chain concerns and capacity issues in the industry that does this type of specialized work. And it seems fairly unlikely we'd be able to expect industry to be able to ramp up and acquire equipment and people unless it was a sustainable level of funding that they could rely on over the life cycle of that kind of investment in their business.
All right. So colleagues, I took that liberty so that we could understand better the, whether the, the motion was, was genuine. It would appear that it is, notwithstanding Ms. Chair's comments to some of the challenges. So with that, it's, this has been moved by Counselor Van Holst. Do, is there a second to this? Counselor Van Holst, I see no second. You still have time as you wish. Any other comments or discussions then, colleagues? Counselor Hopkins, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. If I may, I, I would like to make a, a comment because I have heard from the community a, a number of more or less comments about what we're, what direction we're going here with this, the funding that's available to, to us. And I understand that this is coming from staff's list. There is a number of items on the, as potential projects. And generally speaking, I am supportive of the list that we are going to be approving tonight here for the 40 million. It, it may appear to, to some people in the, in the public that they are not considered essential though. And, and I do understand those concerns. Representing an area of the city that is all about development and the challenges that we are starting to experience, not only with social infrastructure like schools, for instance, but also the infrastructure that needs to keep up with all this development. And a big missing piece here for me is that transit infrastructure. It's really important that we are really start to understand that a lot of these development issues are really coming from how we move around. And it is really important from what I'm hearing in the community that we do that. And we need to do more, especially out in the West End. If not, we're going to be a city of the have and the have nots when it comes to moving around. And I don't want the, the West End to be part of the have nots. So I will be supporting this, this funding going forward, but I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So noted, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. I, I have a couple of comments and, and questions. So I'm going to start with the questions because Counselor Hopkins actually provided a nice segue into one. Through you, your worship, to our staff, something that seems to be a big missing piece in this round of funding is any investment in London Transit and London Transit Infrastructure. In an earlier round of, of this investing in Canada infrastructure funding, the PTA's intake, we approved funding to get 60 new bus shelters. Of course, that's a drop in the bucket to what's actually needed out there in terms of providing shelters at London Transit stops. It was even mentioned in your State of the City address this morning, your worship, that service delivery, on-demand service to industrial areas is, is still moving forward. But I don't see any asks for support in infrastructure investment for LTC to deliver that. So through you to our staff, I guess the question is simply, where's the transit asks in this?
Ms. Chair.
Thank you, your worship. That's twofold. So London Transit Commission was invited to participate in this intake. At this time, they did not wish to advance any additional projects. They are however, working on a number of important projects in the background that could be part of a future ask. I'll note that there is still money earmarked for both North and West former rapid transit leg that could be allocated to different transit priorities through processes with LTC directly or through the Mobility Master Plan, which would provide us another opportunity to review transit service throughout the city. So I absolutely, this does not include transit projects at this time. It doesn't preclude it in the future. But based on LTC's availability to deliver and their ability to scope and define their needs right now, and they're preferring to wait and come back with some options in the future.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you. Well, that answer's a, a little disappointing. I, I'm encouraged by the fact that there's potential still in the future for those to come forward. And I hope that the LTC will advance those because I think there's some, some significant improvements we can make just to general service delivery for the general rider who relies on transit to get around the community. Through you, a, another question to our staff, and I'll preface this with a, a comment to frame it. Some of the feedback that I've heard from the community, and I, I say this without any casting any aspersions on our staff. In fact, Ms. Chair referenced a little bit earlier the supply chain dead challenges that we have been having. And certainly we saw it on the bike lane implementation on Wavel Street. And I will say our staff have been exemplary and wonderful at getting back to constituents with their concerns. But the supply chain challenges have been a bit of a disaster in implementing that and, and leading it only half completed into the winter months. But, but I say that in terms of the challenges, not in terms of our staff's work on that. But one of the things that's come up is we're putting in these protected barriers on neighborhood streets like Wavel. Cheapside is referenced in, in the Civic Works Report as another example of a similar street. And yet we have existing bike infrastructure. Queen's Ave is a great example, which is substandard. We have an entire block of Queen's Ave that has no cycling lane. It's simply dead ends and then picks up again a block later. There's been barriers there. I, I understand with utilities and, and land space. But that's not the only one. There are some other substandard bike lanes in existence around the city. So why are we prioritizing new bike lane implementation over getting the existing bike lanes that are substandard up to a higher standard of service?
Well, let's ask Ms. Chair.
Thank you, your worship. This one's probably twofold as well. So in selecting these projects, there are a number of factors that played in. One of them is the operating cost and capital cost proportions. The rehabilitation of, of existing infrastructure, those bike lanes. Often the capital cost is not particularly high, but the operating costs can be significant. Where we had, so when we're looking at external funding, we don't want to increase our operating burden if we're not gaining sort of that value in asset. Where we did have higher capital costs and Queen's Avenue is a really good opportunity to, to take a look at. There is a significant conflict with some hydro utilities there. But also there'd be a need for either property and likely the removal of a number of mature trees through that corridor. So one of the other factors in picking locations was we didn't want to, to have to embark upon property acquisition, generally speaking, because property acquisition costs are not actually funded through this program. And there's a significant demand on our real C staff time to deliver those negotiations. We know property costs are also quite high right now. So that was another factor. We are aware that there are areas throughout the city that we do need to improve existing bike infrastructure. We're trying to integrate that into other capital projects so it can be done in tandem with replanning those streetscapes, particularly on bridge projects. That's important. But the, the big factor for us is trying to find places where we can work within an existing footprint, maximize the capital value and manage the ongoing operating costs in a responsible way.
Counselor Turner. Excuse me, Counselor Lewis, I apologize. I would like to hear from Counselor Turner again because of his melodic voice, but why don't we stay with you?
Thank you, your worship. Well, as counselors go, we're, we're perhaps of similar height. So that might confuse you a little bit from time to time. But through you, so I appreciate the answer Ms. Chair provided. And I, I do hope, and I did have an opportunity to meet with some of the, the team earlier today and, and raise a couple of these. And I, I hope that that is helpful in terms of identifying some projects moving forward that might be of value to. I do understand the operating cost equation. I do note that there are operating costs increased with new infrastructure as well. So I, I worry that we might be putting that operating cost further and further down the road. Nonetheless, I do understand the logic and I think that there's a lot of good projects in here. The Wonderland in Boulevard Bike Lanes, for example, are in desperate need of rehabilitation. There's no doubt about that. And on Bradley Ave, there is absolutely a need in that part of the city with the amenities that people will be able to access that way. One final question through you to staff. This was raised briefly at Civic Works. With regard to the secure bike parking, I, I know it was raised as a for example, but I, I just want to make sure that we have clarification for the public as well. When we're talking about new secure bike lock, lockers, this won't be restricted just to the core area. We'll be in fact, looking at other areas around the city. And I think about Masonville Mall and White Oaks Mall and Argyle Mall where there's significant transit hubs. Will we be looking at implementing secure bike storage there as well? So people can park their bike and take the bus in a multimodal commute.
Ms. Chair.
Thank you, your worship. Absolutely. Key transit hubs are a really good location for secure bike parking. It, it gives people an opportunity to bike to a higher order of transit, make sure their bike is secure. If they don't want to have to deal with the on, the on-bus bike wrecks, which are also a good option, but people have that choice. So absolutely we'll be looking at other locations outside the core area. We really want to make sure we maximize the usefulness of those, those facilities, the, the ones we've put in so far as the pilot are doing well.
Thank you, Counselor Turner. Or, sorry, it's in my mind. Counselor Lewis, please.
One more time and I think Counselor Turner owes me a beer after the meeting. Or maybe we owe each other one. I would thank, again, thanks to staff and Ms. Chair for that response. I'll certainly follow up her, with her offline about the importance, I think, of Argyle Mall and the, the end of the new Wavel Bike Lane. I can generally be supportive of this, but I do hope that the next round of, of intake does have a little bit more diversity because as Counselor Van Holst did indicate, this one does seem to be weighted very, very heavily for one mode of transportation rather than being spread out among all three pedestrian transit and cycling.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, colleagues, we're dealing with item 10, which is 4.1 Investing in Candidate Infrastructure Program. We will call the question.
Counselor Van Mirbergen. Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. And that concludes my report for the second meeting of the Civics Works Committee.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, now for the second report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. If he's able, because of his voice, I will call on Deputy Mayor Morgan to present his report, please.
I'll give it a go. So I'm happy to present the second report of SPPC. I know that there is one colleague with conflict that was declared on items four and five, which are appointments to the London Public Library Board. So I'd be happy to put the remaining items of the report on the floor with the exception of those two London Public Library Board appointments unless someone would like something else dealt with separately.
Well, let's ask that question. Anyone wish any items to be dealt with separately? I see Counselor Hopkins. Counselor, you're on mute.
You'd think I'd get it by now. Sorry about that, your worship. I do have a question on number seven, 5.1, the sixth report of the Governance Working Group. I just want to confirm that this is the report that came through the two public participation meetings. I want to confirm that. And if that's the case, I do have a question that I guess I would have to pull.
Well, why don't we, why don't we pull it just in the event of, rather than, rather than getting into the Q and A pre, the presentation of the full report. I'm comfortable doing that. So we'll deal with accounts, account, item seven separately. Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you. Number six, which is 4.3 Full-Time Compensation Determination, if you would, pull that.
All right. And as the list thins, does anyone wish items one through three dealt with? Any of those items separately? Counselor Turner.
No, your worship. I just wanted to declare that conflict of interest that I have for items four and five. At this point, as I missed the, the declarations at the beginning of the meeting, I joined a little late. So for number four and five, my reason for conflict is because my spouse works for London Public Library.
Thank you. And the clerk had advised me accordingly. So I, I declared your particular interest in advance, but thank you for reconfirming that. Does anyone wish either, any of the items one through three dealt with separately? Failing that, we will vote, we will look for any discussion on items one through three. I see none. We'll call the question. Your worship, my escribe's gone offline, so I'll vote yes.
Thank you, Counselor Feigman.
Counselor Helmer.
All right, just one sec. The actual language in the vote says the following clauses of the second report of the Planning Committee be approved?
My, that's my error. I'll, I'll correct that.
We are dealing with the second report of the SPPC Committee. Thank you, Counselor Helmer.
Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to zero.
So that was carried. So colleagues, I'm going to suggest we deal with items four and five, which are 4.1, 4.2 together because the same conflict applies. Any comments or questions with respect to four, one and four, two? I see none, then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to zero with one recues.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Uh, yeah, the next item I could put on the floor is item six, which is 4.3, which refers to an item, a piece of communication from Counselor Van Holst that was received without action being taken on it. So I'll put that on the floor.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Ed Holst.
Thank you, worship. So I'm, I apologize for not being at the meeting to discuss this. I'm in communication. I was dealing with a family health crisis. But I'm going to vote against the taking no action and say why. The, the issue of the City of London functioning differently from all their peer cities is, I think, is, is one that's, it's going to be an ongoing discussion until it's really worked out well. One of the, one of the issues or pieces of information that's needed in that discussion is of course, well, how much are other, other communities being paid that, that have a full-time council like that? And there's only a few times where we can get that piece of information. And it's, it's often too late to make, to make a difference. So we do a compensation review at the end of each term. This is the best time to get a piece of information like that. And it'll be available for us in, in the future. Otherwise, we're always, it's always going to be too late. And that's been, that's been this issue in this discussion. It's, it's very difficult to have because it's, it's always pushed off or we don't have the information available. So this is a great time for the compensation review task force to, to determine a figure like this. I think the timing's good. So I believe it would be good to request that. So if the motion is voted down by council this evening, I'll put the motion from my original communication on the floor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? The real Counselor Turner.
That's me. We'll see if my audio cuts out. At the, the meeting, I, I voted along with Counselor Van Holst on this. It's a tough one to fall on one, one way or the other. Ultimately, the challenge for us is a big question of order of operations. If, if council believes that council should sit as a full-time council, then maybe we should just ask that question and get that. Then maybe we should just ask that question and get that over with, and then everything else falls from that. Right? The the question that Counselor Van Holst is asking about how much uh should counselors be compensated if they're at working on a full-time basis? Okay, fair enough. Um asking this might be a little bit of out of step, though, uh doing it the the way that Counselor Van Holst is uh is proposing. We've also had motions to to change meetings to daytime or certain ones. Uh it it's being done in little drips and drabs. It's not being done with any logical sense to it. Uh it it uh it it really lacks focus. So um I today I'm going to vote against the motion. I voted for it in uh in committee. Uh in this circumstance, I I just don't see a clear strategy. And I think uh if counsel is going to continue to to take different little approaches to it. Uh we need to get our act together and just sit down and decide what's it going to be. Instead of perpetually doing these these little things that that really uh. Stoke division within the council uh and the community. Um we we it happened last term, it happened this term, it happened the term before that. It's perpetual. It never stops. So if if counsel decides, yeah, we continue as we are and uh and everything's good, make that decision. If we don't like the way it is, then make another decision, but make it clear and not just little piecemeal parts. So. Uh for that reason, I'm going to vote against it today. Um and uh and I would caution counsel to consider those motions that we bring forward. Uh so that it's done in a bit more of a comprehensive and clear and purposeful way.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I see Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Uh thank you, Counselor Turner, for those comments. Um we're going to agree on this. Um I I think we have been doing it in dribs and drabs and and little pieces, and I I think it is time to ask that question. Um I don't think that this is the way to. Um go about it, and and I I think that's part of what you were perhaps cautioning in terms of thinking about the motions we bring forward. Um although if that was not, I I I don't mean to to put that on you, but um. Uh that's how I feel about it. I didn't think that this was the right um way to do it with a council compensation task force, looking at. Uh what our compensation is right now, independent of us, uh with public input, with counselors being able to fill out a survey and provide our input. But I do agree that I I the reason this keeps coming up, I think, is because it continues to be a question, because we don't want to answer the hard question. Uh are we expecting members of council to do this job full-time? So. Um. I know I certainly do. I know other colleagues put in more than forty hours a week uh doing this job as well, and I I think it's not unreasonable to be. Uh to expect that they're compensated for the time they put in. It is public service, but it is not free service. It's not volunteer service. It's. It's a burden that's an incredible privilege. Uh you you have a lot of important weighty decisions to make. But you're privileged to be in the position uh to make those because the community has been behind you. So. Hearing what Counselor Turner said, um. Uh I'm sure the council will probably continue to follow through on on the committee's direction on this, but I think I'm going to join him. Uh in in voting no on this because I think it's time we. Take a look in the mirror and ask ourselves if we're prepared to to answer the question that's at the heart of why this keeps coming up again and again.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Helmer.
Um. The last council compensation uh review. The task force recommended. That the salary for. Counselor be set at the median full-time. Employment income for Londoners. So I don't really know where the idea that this is not full-time compensation for a full-time job. Is coming from. Half the people in our community who work full-time make less. Than what we make. And half the people who work full-time in our community make more. What I'm hearing is a bunch of people uh who would like it to be like, I don't know, seventy-five percent. Like seventy-fifth percentile instead of the median. Uh the committee looked at that, the task force that looked at compensation, they could have recommended the average full-time income, which was substantially higher. I think it was ten thousand dollars higher. A year than the median. And if that's the argument, I guess, that people want to make, I mean, make that argument. Because certainly there's lots of cities that have counselors that are paid higher amounts than we are. Uh but it was set at the full-time. The median full-time income. I think that's been dealt with. If you think the compensation needs to be higher because it needs to be competitive with, I don't know, Ottawa or Toronto or Halifax, or you just want to be more like the other places. Or you want to set it at a higher level of compensation because you think people aren't going to choose to do the job if they can't get paid enough. To give up their other work, which probably is paid more. I know I was paid more before I became a counselor. Uh and some people are not willing to do that, and it does limit the number of people who can take on this work. So, you know, I I think um. The whether it's full-time or not uh is really a question of how much time people are going to commit. In terms of the wage, it was set at the full-time median income. Um I think that's pretty clear that it's pegged at a level. That's a full-time salary for a lot of people.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I put my hand up after you called on me, so that's a little bit nuts. Uh I just want to um agree with what uh Counselor Helmer said. Uh it is set at the medium full median full-time income in the City of London. It was also explicitly stated in the report that came last term from the Council Compensation Task Force. That it is difficult to um. Really define what full-time means and that they didn't like the idea of defining it as full-time or part-time, but that this should be someone's primary focus. So it doesn't preclude somebody from uh holding another job, which. We probably would not be able to do anyway. Uh however, they the. The advice from the Compensation Task Force that counsel should be somebody's primary focus if they are seeking to um seek a term of counsel. And they are seeking this kind of public service, then they should be all in, really. Um the other um the other. Point is that um. I think what's what's more important and and this idea of the full-time versus part-time is kind of a red hair, and we put the effort in that we are. That we each feel we we need to put in. Um I think what would be a a more, and I'm not suggesting that we. Get into this tonight, but I think what would be a more fruitful task for. Any kind of review body that's reviewing the works of council and how council should be operating and compensated for it, all of those things. Um I think the idea of a more equitable share of the workload on council is something is a discussion that is worthy to have. There are a number of boards and commissions that we sit on. Some of them are extremely onerous, and it is up to the individuals, a counselor, to determine what. To to determine whether or not to put their names forward. No, there's no requirement for any of us to even sit on a standing committee of council. Or just sit on an outside board or commission, and there are some counselors that really do take advantage of that loophole. So I think into the future for the next term of council, perhaps, or if Michael, or sorry, Counselor Van Holst wishes to look at. How things could be improved. I think that is a really important aspect. Um. That should be examined, but as far as labeling full-time or part-time, I don't think it gets us anywhere.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So colleagues, I'll just for the benefit of all, just uh read the motion so we uh we know what we are dealing with. Uh. Uh and this was supported at um. At the SPPC meeting, the communication from Counselor Van Holst dated January nine, twenty twenty-two with res. Respect, excuse me, with respect to typical daytime office hours be received and no action be taken. I had no other speakers, so with that, I will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to three.
You, Deputy Mayor.
Uh yes, the the final item is uh number seven, which is the sixth report of the Governance Working Group, and. Uh I know Counselor Hopkins has uh some questions, so maybe I'll I'll just uh jump in front of that and uh and just let colleagues know that. There were two meetings that the Governance Working Group had, uh one that was spread over two days to listen to the feedback from uh advisory committee members. Which uh is what this report is. Um there's no actions that we took in this report at all. It's just uh uh note noting that we had those two days. Uh of meetings and uh and and received their the feedback. Um the ro- the report where there will be action. Uh recommended from the Governance Working Group uh will come to the next SPPC, um so it's not before council today. Um so this is just the report where we uh listened and uh heard what people had to say.
Uh any comments or questions, colleagues? Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and thank you uh to um the Chair of the um Governance Working Group for clarifying that. There were a number of reports, and I wanted to make sure I'm pulling and asking the question. Um in 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 the right report, and I am, and I first of all want to thank the um Deputy Mayor for chairing. These two public participation meetings on having that open dialogue and debate. I found it very informative, very helpful. Uh I want to thank you for that. Coming out of those conversations that I heard. I I did have a question when it came to. How we're going to be moving forward when it comes to these two plans, the Climate Change Plan and the Mobility Plan. And it was, there were comments around. That there would be some type of a working group or even an advisory group, and I would like to uh go through you. Uh your worship and maybe uh to staff to see if we can have better clarification, not only for myself, but I know for the public as well.
Now, I had directed the clerk's attention away from a a couple of items there for a moment, so I'll ask that the clerk's ready to respond to that.
I would like to go to um uh um staff Kelly Shear in particular uh to respond, given that these two are. Coming from that department, the Climate Change Plan and the Mobility Plan as well.
Then I'll blame the clerk.
But happy to hear from the clerk, too.
Well, I I will apologize because the clerk must have distracted me then. Ms. Share, go ahead, please.
Thank you, your worship. Certainly happy to share an answer with the city clerk as well. Um so we have proposed two. Structures within the Mobility Master Plan and the Climate Emergency Action Plan that might have been the source of some confusion. Our intent is to use the existing advisory committee structure that gets approved by council for the functions of those advisory committees. When we had called and perhaps unfortunately so, community advisory team, uh we're actually meant to be backup house to support our engagement and communications and project team. We know that as we go out for general communication with the community on large projects and large programs, multi-decade programs like this. We hear from people who are really passionate about those issues, but communities that face barriers to participation in our public engagement and our community engagement. Don't always get a chance to have a voice, and we really think it's important to ensure that we have equitable, accessible. Opportunities for people to engage that may not have fit our traditional engagement boxes. So really, those are meant to be backup house organizations to support us, uh not um some sort of parallel process. To the advisory committee structures as approved by council. I hope that provides some clarity, and I apologize if we've contributed to any. Pain or heartburn for council or for the clerk's office. That was certainly not our intention in creating those structures.
Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, if if I can go um make my remarks now, if the city clerk has any comments to make, I I I'd be um. Very open to hearing from them as well before I make my comment.
Clear.
Uh thank you, your worship, uh through you. I I think Ms. Share's um uh indicated quite accurately um. The the situation, uh the recommendations coming forward uh to a future SPPC. Uh will take into consideration all the comments and all the the uh input received from uh council members and the public.
Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you for that, and uh thank you to staff for your comments. I think it's important that we sort of add clarity. As to how the public communication and um participation on these two plans that I know ha- has a lot of public interest. But uh so those will continue as we go through that process, but also uh reaching out to advisory uh groups that. Uh whatever that compensation will compen. Compensation, not com- composition will be, sorry about that. It's been a long day. Um that uh they will also be um. Uh asked uh to be part of uh of that pub process as well, but uh really wanted to uh make sure that there was clarity around. The public participation process, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor.
Uh yeah, I just a a comment. I I want to thank Counselor Hopkins for her her kind words, but I think um. Uh who who we really need to thank is is all of those members who took time out of their schedules to come out and uh share their thoughts. We had an opportunity to suspend the rules. Uh which uh was an idea that I got by visiting the DIAC committee back in December, uh chatted with them about uh approaches to this meeting, and and I would say. Uh suspending the rules and having a very open um back and forth and a dialogue. Uh while at the same time trying to make space for those who might not be as comfortable. Uh jumping in. Uh I'm hoping that that we achieved uh success in that, and and I appreciated your your comments, but but really, I appreciated that. In that open and uh kind of free discussion of dialogue, everyone was very respectful, uh very appreciative of of each other's comments. Uh I think it was a a great discussion, and I think that's a a testament to the the individuals who had the opportunity to to share their time and come out and participate with us, so. Um so I would add uh our thanks to them as well. Uh so thanks, Counselor Hopkins, for mentioning that.
So noted. Any other comments or questions? I see none. We will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Uh that's it for the SPPC report.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, there are no deferred matters, uh nor inquiries. I've not uh been made aware of any emergent motions as well. That uh turns our attention to the bylaws. And the bylaws we will deal with for this very moment, our bylaws, uh Bill sixty-five through eighty-five inclusive. And for those, I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by. Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Van Mirbergen. Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
For a mover and seconder, second reading of Bill sixty-five through eighty-five, moved by Counselor Hillier, seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. Any discussion? I see none. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
For third reading enactment of Bill sixty-five through eighty-five, I'll look for a mover and seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Hamu. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Very much, colleagues. Uh we're about to go into closed session to deal with several items. Uh before we look for a mover and seconder to do such thing, I will ask the clerk just to advise the public the reasons for closed session.
Your worship, the matters to be dealt with in closed session are six items that are outlined on the public council agenda. Uh those are a solicitor-client privilege matter regarding litigation or potential litigation. With respect to an appeal and the OLT, three matters related to a land acquisition with associated solicitor-client privileged advice. And two items related to personal and labor relations matters.
Thank you very much. So with that, I'll look for a motion moving to closed session, moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by. Counselor Hillier, thank you. We will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Look, we will uh be dealing with those six items in closed session. Look, we will be dealing with those six items in closed session, and then we will return to public session when those are completed. Thanks. So we'll just ask our colleagues around the Zoom machines to just bear with us a few moments as we set up the room. Thank you. I've been advised by the clerk that YouTube will not be part of the returning media, but Escrib will.